Call the Board of Alderman, meeting to order for the City of Warrenton for October 21, 2013. We have one item on the agenda, and that's property and liability insurance for the City of Warrenton. We've all had an extra, what, six days to digest and dissect the information and hope we can come to some conclusion tonight. Before we open up the conversation, I'll make a comment. I would have a recommendation to the Board to give consideration to two items. One item would be not bid this over seven years, but bid it on a two- to three-year type thing. I think seven years is way too long. The other thing I would ask that we give consideration, maybe the next turnaround, so we don't get into this same issue where we have down to one or two or three companies, need to probably look at interviewing a broker and selecting a broker who's probably much more knowledgeable than all of us put together on this type of insurance, and hire a broker that we have confidence in and let him guide us through the bidding process and come up with four or five companies and bid it out that direction.
For her.
Pardon me?
For her.
Say that again.
You said him, or her.
Or her, either way, that's true. That's true. So that's my recommendations. Anyway, at this time, I'll open up for discussion on the City liability insurance.
I think Jim wanted to start.
I have no idea about insurance.
I did that on purpose. I'm sorry, Jim, that wasn't very nice of you. I was just being honorary, that's all.
I'm here to learn, because I don't.
All right.
This is all new to me.
And that comment's well taken, and I think that's, several of the Board members probably are somewhat uncomfortable about making these type decisions, and that's why I think we need to give consideration for future, maybe hiring a broker to represent the City.
The only problem I have with that, and then I think we need to get into this discussion, is hiring a broker, specifically, the problem is brokers represent different carriers and have access to different markets. So, you know, sometimes you do limit yourself by saying, "I want this broker," you know, and go with that. So I think we do need to discuss. I don't think that is just a straight, easy decision. I think we have to discuss that.
I don't think it is either. And I agree with you that, and probably the two brokers here tonight, they probably have access to numerous companies. I mean, they're not locked into one, and I think that's part of the process of interviewing a broker. We have a chance as a Board, or whoever does the interviewing, to see what companies they do have access to.
And companies do different things each year. So it's really hard to determine what one company is going to do this year versus what one company is going to do next year. I don't know how we want to open up this discussion. Do you want to open up with any comments, Gary?
Well, I mean, I think there's two general comments before we get into our June, things we may want to consider doing. There's one is, I think there's an issue of, do we consider a little bid because it didn't meet the specs? And that whole topic about, you know, what was on the bid proposal? And if, I mean, because if that is, if you go by there, it changes a little bit the discussion. The other thing I think that we would probably need to talk about is, do, how do we want to come up with a way of making a rational decision? If we can do that insurance, it's extremely difficult, in lieu of the criticism that the health insurance where the auditors want to see some kind of scale. Now, we don't have to do what the auditor said, but I think we have to document the reasons for our decision. And coming up with a scale is kind of difficult, because I may think that the deductible should have a 10 rating, and somebody else may think the deductible should have a 5 rating, and blanket coverage versus specific coverage. I mean, so it's really difficult to come up with a rating. We could spend a lot of time trying to figure that out, and I don't know, you know, in a short meeting, if that's, we can accomplish that. So those are my first two thoughts.
Is it your only two thoughts?
Well, no, I had a lot of thoughts about the proposals.
Alderman Clark, you have any comments?
Well, I was, Gary touched on part of it with the scale. Since the auditors brought it up, and that was part of their recommendation, whichever one we pick, unless it's the absolute lowest bid, we need to be able to tell them how we came about it. Other than that, I'm a little bit like Jim. This is not my expertise, and I've tried to listen to a lot of different people who are in the industry with their recommendations, and they seem to range all over, like Gary said. So I'm still wanting to hear some more tonight from our, I think we got some of the people from the insurance company here, and what the other people, like yourself, who've been in the industry, have to say.
Alderman Flait, any comments?
I don't have too much to say about it, but I do think, since the auditors mentioned it, I think we should try to follow their recommendation, whatever path that will be. But that's what we need to do, I think.
Jim, anything else?
I'm excited.
If no one, if no one from the Board objects, I would give each one of the brokers, if you want to take a few minutes to address the Board regarding your company, your policy, I mean, if you're comfortable with doing that, or if you're not, that's fine, too. Is that agreeable to? You want to start it off, Julie?
They're forated.
Come to the podium and give us your name, name and which company you represent.
I'm Peter Siskus.
And the only thing I ask is that you keep your remarks pertaining to your companies.
I always will.
Okay.
I've got my shit.
Very good.
My name is Julie Myers. I'm West Side County Agency. And basically, the proposal, with being in the incumbent, part of my job always is to make sure that we're always giving you the best company that we have available. Savers has been your carrier for the past six years. Before that, I think even, they've been the carrier for part of it, at least. And Travelers has been part of the carrier as well, for part of the time. With Savers, I cannot say enough that they have been so consistent along the way. They've come out, they've looked at the buildings, they feel comfortable with the evaluations. The blanket coverage is on both the building and the business personal property, part of it, so that kind of takes some of that, I mean, gives a little bit more room, where when you do something more specific, then that co-insurance comes into play, a lot more on like a partial loss rather than a full loss. So Savers, their trend has been very good with you guys. They've proven that, even when there's ratio, or loss ratios, where they've lost more, or they paid more out than they've taken in for the year. So they've never ever threatened to non-renew or anything like that. And, you know, the thing is, we are right down the road. You know, when Brandy calls, I can walk down the road and be right here and go with the different people that come out and inspect the buildings, and that's what we did this summer. So, you know, I think pretty much the rest of it, I've already addressed. I feel like, you know, you have that information in front of you. It's hard, because I'm not really sure what questions are, you know, you still have, so I just don't want to beat a dead horse, so.
Any individual or specific questions for?
Yeah, how long have we been with Savers?
Savers, you've been with longer than six years, but part of the, before that, I guess, I want to say 2001, 2002 area. You guys were with Travelers, some of it.
So the heart of it is, is we went through 2010 with huge claims with Savers, we went through 2011 with substantial claims, and 2012 with substantial claims.
Yes. And they've never, ever debited your account.
So let's talk about, instead of talking about brokerage companies, let's talk about three bids. I love to watch House Hunters. You go to see House Hunters, there's three homes.
Who are you with this?
And so you always, when they can't decide, you always eliminate one to start. So if I was playing House Hunters with this, would I look at Travelers and say, "They're not competitive"? I mean, I'm asking you that question seriously.
Yeah. And although I think Travelers, as a company, is a very fine company, I think they are competitive.
Right.
So I think we've cut Travelers.
And yeah, and the note that said, "In 2007, Travelers chose not to renew the cities due to $114,000 in losses," which was covered when I went to Savers. So to me, my point is, if we're trying to pick out companies, I think we can eliminate that one right away.
I think they're a good fit for some people, sometimes, but this is a little bit of a stretch.
Agreed. A great company, absolutely a great company. I just don't think that they.
And here's the deal, I'll be honest with you, I never meant to confuse the situation by including all three bids, but I do know that I have seen many carrier, or many other brokers that'll pocket bids, and that is not my style. Whatever I have is what is yours. I'm working for you. Is that your only question?
Those were my two questions for you.
Is that agreeable to Alderman Flait, Alderman Dreyer, that Travelers is not, not really in the hunt on this?
I'm fine with that.
Something that bothers me a little bit, especially with 30 years in the insurance business, is the B-rating for Savers. I mean, basically, it tells me they've had more claims than they had capital, or they wouldn't have slipped onto that. I also know how many insurance companies file for bankruptcy and go out of business. I'm a little concerned about that, using public monies to buy insurance. You have a comment on that?
Yeah, I think that, that was something that Dan addressed the day of the meeting. I think they had, I want to say, when, I think you asked, it was like $268 million in surplus.
Yeah, the surplus on Savers is very good. What isn't mentioned here under Savers is that Savers is a Meadowbrook company, and Meadowbrook as the parent company was downgraded, thus their rating was downgraded along with Meadowbrook. So if one of the other Meadowbrook companies is downgraded, you know, that.
And rest assured, I'm going to tell you, if I didn't feel comfortable with their financial, I mean, I can't guarantee anything in life, really, but if I wasn't comfortable with their financial stability, that wouldn't be somebody that's on the table for me anyway, because the city's too important for me as well. So I'm just not going to.
And how much money do they have in reserve?
I'd have to go back.
I wrote it down, too, but it was, it was a system.
For whatever reason, 268 million came to mind. And I know that he said that last time they were downgraded, they were able to even purchase another company. It's not that they don't have the financial backing, but they definitely have it. So I feel comfortable with them.
Any other questions?
I want bigger people than us feel comfortable with them, still. Unfortunately, for me.
Okay. No competition. No other questions, we'll let you go.
All right, thank you.
And we will ask for the Daniel and Henry representative.
I'm Jim Vernon with Daniel and Henry. Todd Taylor with Daniel and Henry. Daniel and Henry is, I guess, 95 years old, 92 years old, something like that right now. We have about 200 people in our office, right across from Forest Park there in St. Louis. One of our specialties is public entities. We can provide references, if you'd like, from Washington, or Chesterfield, or Crete Court, or Baldwin, or Manchester. I think that they would talk about the resources that we have available in our office. Size isn't always everything. You know, we did about $250 million worth of premium volume last year. So from an insurance company's standpoint versus a brokerage, you know, we're larger than some of the insurance companies that are out there. Within our office, we have our own loss control department. People that will come out and not only inspect the premises and look to see if you have any hazards, any particular exposures that we might need to talk about, but they can actually work with you to look at the values of your buildings, which we do feel are, at least in some cases, inadequate. We have our own claim staff. When you get into a difficult claim, and the insurance company, like you talked about the other night, somebody's having a problem with, we have people who specialize in dealing with that type of situation. Again, size is not everything, but it gives us those resources, which I think we could put to use for your advantage here at the, at the city.
Yeah. The only comment that I would make is that I don't envy your positions if you're not in the insurance business. I wouldn't expect any of you to have a great in-depth knowledge of the business. When you lay out the bid specs, though, however, some things are pretty glaring, and as it relates to meeting bid specifications, as we mentioned the other night, in the original advertisement that we received, it clearly stated that the purpose of this bid was to improve upon what the currently, the city currently already had. So therefore, if there are deviations, they should be clearly defined, and I think that we did a really good job of defining those deviations. And I would, I would say that, in all cases, the deviations were to the benefit of the city. When you look at the overall limits, whether it's for public officials or employment practices liability, we're talking about a quadrupling of limits. We have the Missouri sovereign immunity endorsement, which increases your limit of liability. There are a great number of things, and when you come down to a question of deductibles, one of the things that we tried to express the other night was, where the deductibles did not meet bid specifications in three different cases, we went back through the loss history and recorded how much of that information, how much, how much claim cost the city had incurred. And that claim cost, over a period of seven years, was $12,388. You divide that by the seven years, that's coming out to about $1,770 a year in additional claim cost. When you contrast that figure with a nearly $30,000 savings, it seems pretty clear where you might take benefit from a $1,000 deductible to a $5,000 deductible, as we're offering. And if it's on that basis that the Board is uncomfortable with where we are with our deductibles, then I think you look at the earthquake deductible, and you say, "A million-dollar deductible versus a $25,000 deductible," it seems pretty clear. So just to wrap it up, higher limits, lower premium costs, the resources of a Daniel and Henry that writes a lot of other city coverages, A-rated company, I think it's pretty clear. And if you have questions about any particular aspect of our, of our proposal, we're happy to stand here and answer.
Yeah. I have a couple of questions on Atlantic Casualty Company. Have you done business with them for a long time?
Yes, sir. Yes, we have.
Was a $1,000 deductible not an option for Atlantic?
It's not an option for them. They don't go any lower than $5,000.
You know, when I looked at the bid specs, I was kind of amazed that anybody would, would sell the $1,000 deductible. I just thought, that's something you do on your home.
We just got an announcement from Safeco Insurance Company today, that their lowest deductible on homeowners will be $1,500 going forward. You know, $1,000, you know, it's still up there in dollars, but that's, that's pretty low for a city the size of, yeah, the size of Warrenton there.
That's true, too. I had something else that was going to ask.
Essex.
Pardon me?
That Essex.
Yeah, what about, you actually bid that through two companies?
Yes, we did.
Essex, can you tell us a little about them?
We got a quote from, from, One Beacon is the parent of the company we proposed doing your casualty program. We also got a quote from them on the property. Essex was much better on the property, so we presented it to you as opposed to a combined One Beacon quote there. Essex is part of the Markel Insurance Group.
We basically came in with our best shot. We took the best of both, both of, I mean, it was a limited market. I mean, interestingly, at the very, very beginning of this whole dialogue and invitation to bid the city's insurance, our, our goal would have been to have access to the market. And in your discussion about a broker selection process, I think that's an excellent idea. And along with that comes a market selection process. Interestingly, we would have loved to have had Travelers, and as it turns out, even though they weren't on the bid tabs that we got from the city, I was here the day that the bids came in, and I, I heard Julie read off the, the Travelers, and to my relief, I was glad that we didn't have Travelers as a market, because they were, you know, quite a bit substantially higher. But in reality, you look at what is available, and market selection is a huge element in what we'd like to try to do. So in answer to your question about Atlantic and Essex, we took the best of, of everything that we had at our resources and applied it to the proposal.
I would think a brokerage firm as large as you all are, you had a lot of companies you could have bid that way. Am I, or is that incorrect?
The marketplace for public entities, to be truthful, is limited.
Is limited.
Is limited, very much so. There aren't too many out there that really want to write municipalities.
In fact, to get to Markel, they had to go through a wholesaler, so you don't have a direct relationship with Markel.
That's right.
So, which also means there's a, there's kind of a breakdown on that relationship versus when you call the Travelers underwriter, that happens to be in Westport, it's a little different relationship when you go to Markel. But I know Markel well, they're a client of mine. I know Atlantic well, because I was with Atlantic Mutual when One Beacon bought them. So, kind of been through, through those. And Jim, I respect you, you know, known you for a long time, more from an Arthur J. Gallagher than prior to Daniel and Henry. Know Daniel and Henry well, because we've worked very closely with them. I want to tell you first and foremost, my comment is, I didn't appreciate the tone of your letter that you sent to us after that meeting. I felt like it was very pointed and aggressive and not very polite. That's how I took your letter. So some of the things that you said in here, you know, I just, yes, you make some very good points, but I didn't feel like that was the start to a good working relationship. So I was kind of offended by the tone of your letter.
Well, I do apologize if that was the impression that I gave. When we started talking about the bid specifications, and whether it was supposed to be able to deviate there, that kind of.
I know it worked you up, but that's also why we said, "Stop, we want to have another meeting." So I just, I just want to let you know, get that off my chest, because I thought, I thought when I saw this, I'm like, "Well, holy moly, does he want my business or what?" Because that didn't feel so good, okay? I don't have a problem with the B-rated admitted carrier, B-plus rated admitted carrier, or the A-plus non-admitted carrier, being the Essex piece. I think everybody has enough financial sound, and yes, it's 498, 498 million in surplus is what Savers has. So my concern, and even the deductibles, I think deductibles and limits are things we work out, I think we can easily work on that. And I think as a Board, we need to sit down and go through that in great detail. We have a meeting here in November. I have a much bigger issue with the losses that I don't think are in that loss data that you've sent to Markel and to Atlantic.
I resent that comment.
We had some claims that have come through since. And my fear is that, once this additional knowledge gets out, we have a carrier who has kept us through this terrible period of time, a totally unprofitable insurance program, and what happens when the new carrier, if we go with a new carrier, what happens when they see that additional loss data?
I do resent that comment. You're questioning my ethics as to whether I sent that to an insurance company.
No, I'm not questioning you at all. I don't know, it wasn't on the loss forms when we sent out the bids, because these are new.
So you've got losses out there that weren't on the loss forms?
These are new losses. When did they hit the loss form? Because we got the finals, I have, we got the finals.
We have not finalized either one of those yet.
Okay. So I'm, I'm thinking, you know, for open disclosure, this is going to come. We know it's been in the papers.
We used the loss data that the city provided.
I know you did. I am not questioning you two at all.
To me, you just did, Karen.
No, I'm not. I'm not questioning you at all. I know the loss data that you receive, very well aware of it. But our loss data, when it comes out next year, is going to reflect two additional claims. Am I wrong?
No, I think that's accurate, once they're finalized.
Right. And, and that's my concern. I'm not questioning you two at all. This is not a question of you, your ethics, or anything. This is knowledge that we have as a Board that are not finalized, and they're in the papers, so, so it's not anything secret, but I think we're going to see additional stuff.
I guess I was a little confused when we were talking about, I mean, I looked at the sheet here, and the sheet, and I assumed this is the data everybody got. The sheet shows for 2009, $6,000 in claims, for 2010, $460,000. 2011, $95,000. 2012, $95,000. And so far this year, 19, but we know there's more coming. So, I mean, does everybody, because when you were talking about claims, you mentioned.
You've had, you've had one significant claim. It was a very large auto accident related to a police officer. When, when someone looks at something like that, and over a period of years, you've had one large claim, that can possibly be said, "Well, that was an aberration." So you look at the overall experience for the account. When you discount that, you know, the $118,000 premium that we're quoting is not a bad figure for the insurance company or the city.
Well, but you understand, I think, what Sharon's concerned is, I, I'm sorry, Karen. What Karen's concerned is, if we have, if we back that up, we have $95,000 2011, $95,000 2012, and $95,000 2013, does the underwriter come in and go, "I'm not sure we want to take this on," because the difference between the payout and the premium is so small, there's, you know, so, you know, I've seen it happen, more so in health insurance, where you walk in with the bargain and you walk out the next year getting bruised. So I guess what's your point, Karen, is, is how much comfort do we have that if we go and jump to another carrier, that that carrier's going to be there with a reasonable price increase, be willing to even write the package on the following year? If you've got two years, almost $100,000, or three years, $100,000, which is, I'm sure we'll come in at.
We certainly do not guarantee a premium for the next year.
Right, I understand. We can't.
Well, I can't. We've quoted a premium for this year based on the loss experience that you have provided.
Right. And Jim, I don't think, I don't think any of us are questioning you on that.
I appreciate you saying that.
That is not a question, it's just, it's a statement of concern on my behalf, knowing that those will be there. So.
And those claims have already been, the claim information that you say that we haven't been privy to is already been submitted to the current insurer, correct?
Yes.
So those dollars would be the responsibility.
Of them.
Of them.
Which is exactly right.
And it's a claim, is it, so I would presume, and you haven't told me anything about what kind of claims they are, but my, my guess is it's claims made versus occurrence, correct? Are my, if they've already been turned in, in either case, they would be the responsibility of the current insurer, whether they're claims made or they're, or they're in occurrence space.
They definitely are, no question whatsoever. That's not the point. They, they know about them, they, they know everything about them. My, my thought is, what happens next year?
Oh, yeah. Well, and I think that's a legitimate.
The underwriter in me goes, "Whoa."
Is your concern with your current carrier, what they're going to do with it, or us?
No, because they already know about it. That's my, that's, you know, that's the thing. The fact that, the fact that we've got the renewal that we do with the knowing about these, because this isn't, this isn't a lightning strike just hit the building yesterday.
Well, maybe this wasn't the year to put it out to bid, because without that information, we wouldn't have been aware of it.
I think you're exactly right.
And, and we came in on the basis that this was going to be an open and, and a fair bidding process.
Since we started this bid process, one of them I know is completely closed, and I think the other one is probably close to it, very close to it.
So all we can do really.
I'm not sure what you're talking about there. You've got two claims that will be closed?
Two liability claims.
Two liability, how big?
Can't disclose that information to you, Jim, because it's not, it's not done yet.
So all we can do is provide you with the coverage for the following year at the, at the premium that we've been able to provide, with the limits that we've described. And again, and. and Jim and I worked on that letter together, so I'll take responsibility for any offense that, none was intended. From our point of view, the whole discussion at the last meeting that we attended seemed to center on two main elements of concern from our point of view. Those two elements of concern were the deviations from spec, and our position was clearly stated in the letter, and though it wasn't intended to be offensive, the reality is, you want to encourage innovation, you do want to create competition, you do want to encourage a better deal for the city. And if those deviations can be defined in such a way that they provide, and this is a quote from the bid spec that we originally received, "innovation," and can demonstrate a favorable condition to the city, then they will be considered. So from our point of view, and what was embedded in that letter, was the attitude, hey, we've met those, we have fulfilled that request, we've come up with innovation. Now, in part, it wasn't entirely of our doing. The insurance companies didn't offer $1,000 deductibles in the areas that you requested. They did offer $25,000 deductible on earthquake versus a million. I don't think that could be argued as a disadvantage. So that was, that was item number one. Item number two were the limits, and that was what the purpose of the letter was, to say, on all these items and all these conditions, we've met and exceeded, and yes, we have deviated, but here's why those deviations have been in your favor. We never got into the intricacies of co-insurance, because we didn't know our audience, quite frankly. I had a letter prepared today, which Jim said, I think that's probably too much detail. But it had to do with co-insurance. And now I understand you're in the insurance business, I don't have to explain it to you. Eighty percent is better than ninety percent, particularly if you're looking at higher property limits. And even on the basis where those property limits are on a blanketed basis, there are provisions that are embedded in the policy that deal with co-insurance requirements. So, all in all, and I'll shut up, because I can continue, I think we've done what has been asked of us, and we've, you know, I think this is my sixth trip out here, and I can appreciate and respect the fact that Julie's down the street. But we're here, and we would not have made our presence to come out, and I visited every single location, from every park, and took pictures, and provided very detailed information to the underwriters that were looking at your risk. So, we would like to work for you despite what suggestion might have appeared in that letter. We're here because we want your business. So, I think that's probably a good place to end it, unless you have other questions.
Any other questions for Jim and Todd? Fred, or Jim?
Sure.
We thank you for the information. Appreciate it. Didn't mean to put Julie on the spot.
No, we thank you for the...
We thought while you're here, we would like to clear up any discrepancies that we might do.
We appreciate your inviting us up, so thank you.
You're welcome.
I do have a question on the, well, not here, but for Julie. On the earthquake insurance, the deductible is 10%. So, we struck on that a little bit. That would bring it up to like a million dollars if we had a total loss?
Yeah.
If we had a major earthquake?
Yes, but that's, I never, I didn't go back to the carrier to see if they would do something different, because we just kept it at the bid specs. We felt like at this point, it's kind of got a little muddied up to begin with. So, you know, just kind of keeping that consistent, and that's something that we can address with them is the only thing I can offer at this point. Because it was getting a little bit much to try to figure out what, what the difference is if we made it a $5,000 deductible, and what the difference would be if we made this one at $10,000. So, therefore, it was starting to make the proposals a little difficult to follow when it was already difficult to begin with, because we weren't all, even my proposals didn't sync up. So my answer is, yes, you do at this point have a 10% deductible for earthquake, which is the million dollars.
Let me ask, how does that compare on the sheet here, the 25 deductible? Is that per location? Is that per occurrence? Is that aggregates of the whole year?
All the deductibles on our proposal on the property side are per occurrence. So...
Per occurrence, per building, though?
No.
I thought you had specific building.
No, no, no. Per occurrence, not per building. So you have a, you have an earthquake, it's one occurrence, one deductible, all locations.
Let me ask you something, Karen. You know, I'm not a...
Sorry, Karen, or Julie.
I'm, you know, I'm not a real big proponent of earthquake insurance, but I'm also not used to insuring water towers and, you know, typically, what happened, how does that differ if you lose three or four towers, you know, because they're up in the air? Again, you don't think about that, because usually when I'll get in the business, we think about buildings and brick and mortar, and this is something different.
Terry and I had a detailed conversation about that this afternoon, and what will probably happen after I say this, is I'll go home and the brick facade on my house will crumble into pieces. But, I mean, I couldn't even care less if I have earthquake coverage on my home out here. I mean, we're not in an earthquake zone, and like I said, I could get home and my house will start shaking now, and then there goes my reelection for sure. But, you know, I...
The information given to me from my wife with the electric company, we are in an earthquake zone.
We're in a zone, but we're not, we're not on the soiled streets.
We're within 60 miles of St. Louis, which is a major earthquake fault.
Yes, we are.
So...
Yes, we are.
It depends on who you really talk to. They're pretty well to buy it on it, but the most people I've talked to is a lot higher.
When I worked with Bert Chavich back in 1992, we weren't in an earthquake zone, weren't we?
You can take it out if you want.
I don't know if it would be helpful for us to go through some of the lines where we think are critical differences between the two things, just so we have, because several people don't have understandings of this, and just kind of talk about, because then you can start to formulate in your mind, what's of value to you, what's not of value.
And I could do that all day long, and it could take me all day long, and I have no problem doing that. And there are pluses and minuses in both of these programs. And, you know, I, I could really make a plus for Julie, a plus for Jim and Todd. I could do either way. My biggest overriding concern is what's going to happen next year. That is my biggest concern, and I don't feel comfortable...
Switching, Karen.
...in a switch when I know the one already knows what's going on, and that's my biggest problem. And that's not fair. That is not fair to you gentlemen in the back row, and I understand that. But there's absolutely nothing that can go in your loss runs until it's closed. So, there's nothing we can do about that.
But basically, I mean, if I understand, what you're saying is that Savers has a $147,000 bid, they may have already factored in the additional claims because they knew about them, even though they weren't published or finalized. I mean, they obviously were...
It's not fair. It's totally the incumbent's benefit. I mean, it's no different than me knowing about a quadriplegic claim at a school district that nobody else knows is going to be a $5 million claim.
Are they open on the loss rounds that we get?
I don't know.
I don't know either.
I don't know. No?
I don't think so.
In defense, Savers could be the same boat next year, too. I mean, they know they have two additional claims, and I'm surprised they bid it this year, knowing our loss history. It kind of shocked me. We have no guarantees that next year, they're going to say, you know what, we've had enough of this fund, and we're going to let somebody else do it for a while.
I have, if I may address that, but I can definitely see where you're coming from, except that they've proven for many, 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 many years now that they're on board with you, they're in it to win it, kind of a thing. They're with you guys. And I have not seen Savers just up and non-renew someone. I have seen, like I said, Travelers did it, I do know that, and then they, they took you back, even when Travelers dropped it. So, I definitely, as long as, you know, it's kind of like a hand-in-glove type thing, as long as you're loyal to them, they're loyal to you, you know. Will they have to accommodate for the losses? Absolutely. But I don't, I would be shocked if they non-renewed you. And if I may address Alderman Clarkery, as far as the, again, on the 10%, that is something that we can go back and address. I know that Brandy and I, and Terry, actually, I think, you know, when this is all finished, if I'm the person that gets to work on your insurance going forward, you know, that's a meeting that, I think that we would like to sit down and figure out all these different areas that maybe we can bring to you. Would it be beneficial for you guys to look at this, or beneficial for that? And, you know, at those times, look at a different avenues for those. Because there are some things that have come out of the situation, the fact that Travelers and MoPer would only do a $5,000 deductible, the fact that their carrier would only do a $5,000 deductible, it kind of speaks of the trend. And so Savers is doing what we've always asked them to do, and so, you know, I think sometimes it's good to revisit and revamp that baseline, based on the trends today.
What kind of, I mean, Karen and I, you're a lot talking, what kind of concerns do you guys have? I mean, because we could probably sit and make point counterpoints all night on each of them.
I like to know is, if we're bidding this, if they give us a bid and we accept it, then if we're like, I mean, we've been doing it for like seven, six, seven years, so if we get a seven-year bid...
It's not a seven-year bid.
It's a one-year bid.
It's a one-year bid.
They'll re-quote.
But we just, we just automatically do it for seven years?
We automatically renew it...
For this year.
Every year for seven years. And then we, the way it's bid in the past, and then we rebid it.
We don't go out and bid.
So, yeah, we don't go out and get new bids. We're kind of stuck with whatever that premium is.
So, this last one was the one, they redid it every year, but it was, they got to do it for six or seven years.
But that's only because the board chose not to go out.
Yeah, I mean, I honestly think this is, but I honestly think this is a situation where we get this settled tonight, and then we start planning and officially go out again with everything we've talked about, organize this in better format for going forward, and we bid again next year. We don't wait two years, we do it again. So we get our baseline, we have, you know, the scoring that we want to talk about.
That way, I think we'd bear off just every year, then, and then...
Well, not necessarily every year.
Because you know what, it should be jumping. Something happens, and then they'll raise it to next year.
You want to develop some kind of loyalty on this side of the table, too.
Yeah, you don't do it every year, but I think next year, we probably, between now and next April, we should have already in place amongst ourselves what our priorities are.
Well, it's just, if we get a bid on it, and something like you're talking about, whatever those two things are going on, and then they decide to raise it next year, then, you know, I mean, even though we have a bid, they can just raise it.
Yeah, it's a renewal every year. Just because we don't go out for bid every year doesn't mean they don't re-quote it every year.
I mean, it could be like, if they come back, let's say, I don't know, what's the increase in Savers this year?
It's a, it's not a two-year program.
It was 5.8 last year.
It's not a two-year program.
Okay, so let's pretend it was 50% increase this year. We would have, we would have been locked into that. We could have went out and bid. So, what the premium increase does, plays into your consideration, do you want to go out for bid or not? If the premium increase is ridiculous, and you say, well, we proved to look in the market to see if this really is our reality, versus there's a different reality. So you kind of, you kind of have to judge it, but I think the point is to not look at it for a five or six-year period when the board considers to do it, it's not the proper thing to do.
Yeah, no, I think, I think we do go back out again next year, for sure. I think after we've put our ducks all in a row, we spend some time. I mean, there's a lot of things as a board, we've focused on certain things and not others over time, and, you know, I think this is one of the topics we have in November, when we get together as a group and do our planning session, you know.
On the top.
Yeah.
Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome.
Can I ask a question? I mean, we got MoPer here, and we haven't talked about MoPer. What's your thinking?
My feeling with MoPer is, and this is just my, my opinion of MoPer, and it's probably not even true, but my first opinion of MoPer is it's the market of last choice. It's like the state pool for municipalities. And, you know, you go with MoPer, if you leave MoPer, you have to sit out a full year, you know, that kind of thing. It's not like a free open market versus these other carriers. So, it's an option, it's definitely an option, but it's a state-run...
But there is no reading, because it's the good faith of the state.
It's a state-run program, exactly. I could have a B-plus with Savers backed by Metalbrook.
They have it the state of Missouri backing.
That's...
And they do quite a bit of business in the state of Missouri.
There's a whole list online.
Typically, smaller, larger.
Depends on your experience.
Yeah.
And there's some good and bad things about them, that if you have great loss experience with them, you might get money back at the end of the year. They, you know, it's kind of a cooperative type thing.
But you're also sharing limits, too, if I'm correct on that.
Somewhat true. I guess what I'm not interested in, Gary, you mentioned about going through line-for-line thing. I agree with all...
It would be kind of confusing. I agree.
We could be here all evening. I guess one of my concerns is, does the board have any interest in going to the higher deductible?
Yes.
That was one of my recommendations earlier. Is that something you would consider, or you want to put on the table?
I would definitely consider it.
Oh, absolutely. I think we have to, the conversation, higher deductible, maybe in the case of both of the things we're talking about. But, yeah, we definitely have to go to higher deductible.
Alderman Clark, you comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable with that.
Alderman Flank?
You uncomfortable or comfortable?
Alderman Dryer?
My guess.
Well, didn't you send me, Terry, I thought sent me an email talking about if we'd gone with a higher deductible over the last X number of years, we figured our savings of that. I didn't bring the email with me.
I have it somewhere.
I think Brandy had that off.
Did Brandy do it?
Yeah, I appreciate her doing that.
Yeah.
I do, too. But once again, it's a gamble, because it could have been just the opposite.
Yeah, that's true.
It truly is a gamble, one way or the other. But I feel an organization as large and financially fit as we are, we should take advantage of a higher deductible.
Good. So, all right, that issue's out of the way.
Well, it is to a certain extent, if we decide how high of a deductible.
Well, I think we have to make that decision.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, you have to recognize that if you go with the higher deductible, the distance between the two bids is going to get narrower. I don't know how much narrow, but it will be narrower. Well, okay, no, it does say here, it's with higher deductibles, $138,000 versus $138,000. Is that right?
Yeah.
Why is this one $132? Why did it go significantly up? With the toll, with the toll va, what does that mean, with toll-valued earthquake coverage? It jumped. What does that mean?
Wasn't there an additional $14,000 in premium when they increased the earthquake coverage to cover the total property, correct, gentlemen? It increased the premium by 14,000.
I'm confused. I thought that the cop package covered the toll property.
Not as it was submitted.
What does that mean?
It was only 2.5 million.
It was 2.5 million total coverage on earthquake.
The original, the original bid specs did not specify a limit, and the primary layer of coverage offered by the insurer was 2.5 million. It was just a week or so ago that we were asked to increase that to the total value, which was slightly over $11 million. And that, we gave two different bids. One was at the full limits, which as Terry described, was an additional $14,000 in premium, so 11 million. Or at half of that, I think there was a figure, and I don't have it off the top of my head.
Todd, could I interrupt your issue? Because, boy, our recording device doesn't pick your voice up in the back.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. My mistake.
No, so the original bid specification did not, did not specify a, an earthquake limit. So, the primary layer of coverage offered by the insurer was 2.5 million. That was true of both, of One Beacon slash Atlantic and Essex. So...
Did you see them to pick up the rest? Is that, or did they offer the higher...
They offered, they came back upon request, which was about a week ago, when Brandy wrote and said, can we increase that limit? And we said, well, sure. It was never specified, but we can increase it. And we re-quoted it, and that was at $11 million in limits, which was the full value.
But One Beacon did it, or did you get an X, another carrier to pick up?
It was, it was Essex. Essex is the one who provided us with the, with the quote.
Gotcha.
Yeah. And by the way, the $25,000 was still the deductible, even at the full, full limit of 11 million in values. So, does that answer the question, your question about earthquake?
And what does that do to your premium?
Well, it increased it. It increased it by 14,000, but we also offered an interim limit.
Okay.
Jim, do you remember what the interim limit was? We had, actually, I have it right here, if you can just bear with me.
Conditioning on in here.
Okay, so, for the full limits of 11,366,498, the additional premium was 14,366. If you were to elect to a more middle-ground limit for earthquake coverage, that was an additional 2.5 million, so now it's 5 million. The additional premium was half of, of the 14, it was at 7,500.
Julie, what is your wind inhale deductible, the Sabers currently?
The follow, the follow is with the property.
So, a question that comes out, how important is the full earthquake limits to the board? Or, or is it something you can live with, with, with just 5,000 or 5 million limits versus 11 million?
And by the way, if, if earthquake isn't a concern, I, I made a comment earlier, we can take it out. It's, that's always an option.
You know, and I, I think Alderman Casterly mentioned she's not concerned with earthquake on her personal thing, and I'm the same way. I, I have earthquake on none of my rental properties. But that's not to say I wouldn't protect the public's interest.
Right.
I couldn't do that on a $10 million risk, taxpayers' dollar. It is a concern for me, then.
And I respect that.
Thank you.
So, so when you bring it up to the 14,000, 14,000 additional premium, it makes the earthquake coverage comparable, except one has a 10%, the other has a 25,000. And it was 25,000 per occurrence?
Yeah.
Per occurrence.
With one exception, there, the one exception is that the, the values are different.
So, our values were appraised through cost estimators that increased the value of the, of the buildings. So, we're looking at a total of 11, 11,366,000, and I can't speak directly to what Sabers was offering, but I think this, I think it was 10 million. So, there was about a million-dollar difference in total limits between what we proposed and what the city originally asked for. And then the example I gave in last week's meeting was that this building, for example, was valued at 1.4 million. The appraised value through our cost replacement estimators came to 2.232 million. So, there are, there are differences.
Brandy, I can't find the documentation in my notes here. I'm looking for the premium at a $5,000 deductible from Sabers, and if we have another deductible option. With Sabers is, for the $5,000, that's that 138,547 at the bottom. Oh, that's that one.
So, if you make the earthquake comparable, and you make the deductions comparable, the bids are pretty comparable, actually, 138 versus 132.
Yeah. I could, I could go back and forth, and I have already gone back and forth on these things till I'm blue in the face, and I'm glad I'm out of the property business, because I didn't enjoy it that much in the first 15 years of my career. I'm going to put this out there, and then you guys can go from here. I'm going to make a motion that we accept the incumbent bid with a $5,000 property deductible from Sabers, which has a premium amount, if this is correct, of 138,547.
47 or 46?
This is 47.
47.
Can I make a comment here, please?
Certainly.
There's a motion on the floor, ma'am.
You're redoing the Sabers bid to make them comparable. Did you also increase the public officials' employment practices limit?
I'm making my motion based on my feeling about what could happen next year with the claim activity, Jim. That's why I'm making my motion. I can, I can go back and forth on these all night long.
And I don't see where the back and forth here is. I don't see where the problem is.
Well, I, I could, because I do value the incumbent. I truly do. And I think we've got a decent insurance program. I, I think there's things that this board needs to work on. I really think this board needs to sit down and have some pretty detailed discussions, not only about this program, but our work comp program and our health insurance program. And, and I truly have a fear of, of that information, you don't have access.
The answer to your question is no.
And the limits on the general liability?
They, they didn't change.
The auto liability?
Same.
The law enforcement? I mean, guys, you've got a good program here. I, maybe it's because we're not explaining it well enough, but you're saving money, you're improving coverage. I'm not sure what else we could do in, in this situation. She got a motion on the floor. I'm going to second the motion, and let me explain why I'm seconding it. I share Karen's concerns about renewal prices, and I also believe that we need to go out and rebid it next year, with everything considered in. There may be specific lines that I'm more or less concerned about, that one has an advantage over the other, but overall, my guess is concern over premium renewal, based on our history.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Alderman Casterly, second by Alderman Ock, to accept the renewal premium from Sabers. Sabers through Tri-County Agency in the amount of 138,547.
That's what this showed.
And that compares roughly to 132,727. That's what I'm looking at.
How you say that? I didn't understand.
It's comparable to, realizing that you're never going to get total comparables, but that's what I'm looking at.
Any comments for the discussion, Alderman Clark?
I always wanted to make sure I understood Alderman Ock's, the 138, with the, with the, how you're reading all the coverage, is comparable, is comparable with the 132 of Atlantic?
Right, right. I mean, we're trying to-
I'm trying to figure out how you, how you, you come up with that conclusion.
You can go back and forth forever. I can tell you the wind inhale deductible is more important than your deductible.
Well, I mean, there's a, I mean, it's, to me, it's a comparable, like I said, we can go through each line and talk about where we feel difference is important, but I think since the bid is that close, my overriding concern is the same, is the same as Alderman Casterly, that, that I'm concerned about premium renewal.
So, it's the advantage of already having a, being the carrier then.
The incumbent.
Well, I don't see the advantage, it's-
It appears to be.
Well, it, you know what, it usually is, John. That is usually the case when you're the incumbent, you do have a little bit of an advantage.
Did your question answer?
Yes.
I'm like you, sir, I have no idea where those numbers came from. I, I hope when we're done here, you guys will publish those.
Alderman Dreyer?
We don't have it.
Any further discussion? Alderman Flake?
No, I think there's been enough.
I ask for a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Dreyer? Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell is absent. Other person, Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
No.
Motion carried four to one with one absent. That's the only thing on the agenda that I have for this evening. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Go move.
Second.
A motion to adjourn by Alderman Clark, second by Alderman Dreyer. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed likewise, we adjourn.